I think we've got everybody.
We do.
All right, so. The December 16, 2020 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt.
President.
Commissioner Gambetti.
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley.
Here.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
And Chair Cruz.
Here.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. I'm going to read a short announcement regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote social distancing, Prosper Portland is holding this meeting electronically as allowed by state law. All members of the commission are attending remotely by phone or internet, and Prosper Portland has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The public can also provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, that's prospercommissioners, all one word, no spaces, at prosperportland.us. Thank you. All right, so we'll start off with commissioner reports, and I'll just open it up. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report this month?
Just a quick meeting on Friday, the December 11th, with the Board Officers of Hacienda CDC.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Platt. Okay, and if nobody else has anything, oh Willie, yes, sorry.
I attended the Safe from Hate Job Site Culture Meeting on the 3rd of December and the Regional Collaborative Committee at Metro for the C2P2, the Construction Careers Pathways Project, on the 15th.
Great, thank you very much. All right, if nobody else has anything, then I will turn it over to Executive Director Branham for the Executive Director Report.
Thank you, Chair Cruz. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to see you all for our last board meeting of 2020. It's been quite a year. Last month, at the board meeting, we talked about opportunities to support local businesses who need our support now more than ever. And in fact, this past Wednesday, December 9th, the City of Portland proclaimed December to be "By Local Month" at their city council meeting. So just a reminder that if you are doing any holiday shopping, there are a number of ways that we and our partners are working to help promote safely shopping locally and small. You can visit builtorgan.com, pdx sos.com, bindle pdx.com, and of course, our site shop smallpdx.com to find out about in-person and virtual opportunities. You'll see that the shop Small PDX site includes a searchable business directory. It includes several hundred BIPOC-owned businesses and can be filtered by geography, so location, or shopping categories. There's also an events calendar to highlight some markets that are happening, activations and other promotions across the city, and there are links to our partners' online directories as well. So if you forget any of the names, you can go to shop Small PDX and find your way to any of those fantastic virtual centers. I also want to acknowledge Lisa Norwood, Nizau, Amanda Park, and Megan and Amy Nagy for their effort to get the shop Small side up and running in record time while working to promote all of our partners. And the holiday pop-up shops at 10Y, which is located between 9th and 10th Avenues on Southwest DM Hill, are now open if you feel like shopping in person. The four pop-ups featured this year are Oracle's Infused Wellness, which crafts wellness products that enhance your ability to heal, protect, and find yourself through plant medicine. I can personally speak to the efficacy of their product, so highly recommend that. Nomadic Vintage PDX sells exquisite, one-of-a-kind, handcrafted rugs, truly something to see and check out. Swabkin is a social justice clothing business, and Quincy Brown, who's founder of We All Rise Consulting and a local artist, is going to be using his art to tell the story of his family's migration from Alabama to Oregon. So please do go to 10Y and support these local pop-ups. They're open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM Tuesday through Saturday, and they'll remain open through January. They join the new Orox Leather Space and Abbey Creek Vineyard Tasting Room called The Crick PDX, which are also located at 10Y. So huge appreciation to Amanda Park, Amy Nagy, Amber Breckenridge, Elise Hendrickson, and Anne Megan for their work in getting the pop-up shops up and running and doing it under the COVID safety, evolving safety regulations. So appreciate their work there. Looking ahead, I want to flag that the Albina Vision Trust is hosting a series of community design workshops to further capture Portland's vision for the Rose Quarter or the Albina District. These workshops will feature virtual activities, kind of hands-on virtual activities, to get participants to draw and otherwise directly convey their aspirations for site programming. They will be offered three times in the coming days. There's an opportunity for Black Portlanders, for Portland youth, and for the general community. And so please go to albina-vision-trust event right dot com to register for the session that you'd like to participate in. And finally, I want to highlight an opportunity that Prosper Portland, the Portland Athletic and Outdoor Groups are seeking for up to 10 Portland brands to be featured at Shop Objects Virtual Trade Show, Shop On, which is taking place February 8th, 2021. The Shop On show annually attracts more than 5,000 buyers from across the room. It allows brands to manage their own showrooms and enables buyers to enjoy virtual event days and themed feature weeks, and it creates opportunities for all participants to join in real-time engagement and business-building opportunities. If you're selected, Prosper Portland and Portland A&amp;O will reimburse companies for half of the $2,500 standard participation fee. And in addition to the subsidized entry fee, all accepted brands will be featured in a Portland digital showcase on the Shop Object Marketplace. Applications are considered, will be considered through Friday, December 18th, so get your applications in soon, and you can find out more information and register at aoportland.com, and you can click on the Shop On logo. So finally, I want to recognize that we have some staff transitions that are taking place and want to appreciate each member. You know, we have a packed agenda, so I'm just going to briefly touch on our three colleagues who are leaving at the end of the year. Eric Jacobson is a project manager in the Development and Investment Department. He's been with the agency for more than a dozen years and was instrumental in the Birdside Bridgehead Project, the original go-around, as well as helping with the acquisition of the post office. Most recently, he's been working on Centennial Mills, and so his impact at the city and at the agency is lasting. Trolls Adrian, who has been the manager of our business and industry team, led the rethink of our work with clusters to make sure that we are having a focus on inclusion and equity, not just talked about, but really instrumental within our work to support traded sector growth and identified ways to help make growing companies more inclusive and more inclusive companies grow. So we wish him well, and we'll miss him as well. And last but certainly not least, Myra Ariola, our Director of Equity Governance and Communication, is leaving Prosper for a role at the Oregon Department of Education. We are very sad to see her go, but are excited for her that she's got this incredible new opportunity to help shape the outcomes for youth who are served through our educational system. You know, this is a passion of hers, driving change and equitable outcomes, so we wish her well in that, but her impact at Prosper will also be felt for a long time. She's been instrumental in all of our work to institutionalize racial equity, not just from a policy standpoint or a framework, which she has done, or even from an outcome perspective, which she's also done. But just as importantly, from a cultural standpoint, she has insisted that we think about how we are and how we can be better together to one another when we engage with our community, and that showed up from everything from the work on Broadway Corridor and how we engaged community there in a very different way, to her work with the Council for Economic and Racial Equity, to her work driving trainings and important conversations internally. So I will personally miss Myra very much, but I am excited for her and wish her nothing but the best, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Kimberly. And just on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Eric, Trolls, and Myra for all of their great work over the years, and just let you know that we will miss all of you and we wish all of you the best, and thanks for your great service to the agency and to the city of Portland. Next up, would someone like to make a motion to approve the November 18, 2020 Board of Directors Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Great, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you'd like, if anyone listening or watching would like to provide public comments, once again, you can email prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us and provide comments that way. Okay, next, we have two consent agenda items, items six and seven. Those are resolutions number 7405 and 7406. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those two consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you. Could we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You pass unanimously. Okay. So now we're to the regular agenda item. This is item number eight. It's an action item approving the terms of a special authority loan of up to $2,348,334 to the Portland Chinatown History Foundation for purchase of the Kita Building in the River District Tax Increment Finance District. And Bernie Karoski and Laura Alcinas will present.
So welcome, Bernie and Laura.
Thank you. Justin, can you put that up? Okay, there we go. Okay, great. Well, good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. Thanks for this opportunity to talk about this loan for really one of our great cultural institutions in Old Town Chinatown. Next slide, please. So again, what we're asking for is about a $2.4 million loan to the Portland Chinatown History Foundation to purchase the Kita Building, which, if you don't know where that's at, it's on the corner of Northwest Davis and Northwest Third, right across from, right across from the hotel, you know, in that area, the Society Hotel. Excuse me, no. Yeah, the hotel. So what this will do, this will allow PCHF to acquire the building that they're in. It's always been their hope to purchase that building. They have, it's the home of the Chinatown Museum, which opened in 2018 after a great amount of effort by the PCHF to get that museum open. Okay, so this will give them a permanent home and make them secure in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So in terms of our strategic plan and outcomes, this is going to hit mostly on the partnerships in the neighborhood aspects. In terms of partnerships, it helps us, well, partner with key cultural institutions in Old Town Chinatown. In the neighborhood, this helps with bringing people into the neighborhood and actually helps with the economy right now that sorely needs it in this part of town. This cultural institution others is very, very, very important to us. Okay, the next slide, please. Okay, so the Kita Building, so it's 9,500 square foot building on Davis and Third, and this has the Portland Chinatown Museum in it, which is permanently exhibit all beyond the gate, and it also has the Red Robe Tea House. The Red Robe is actually a subtenant of PCHF and helps them pay the rent. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background, PCHF was created in 2014 by Chinese elders and their descendants, you know, with the mission to really to educate on the rich Chinese, the rich Chinese-American history in Portland and, you know, all that they, their discrimination and exclusion, ultimately citizenship, and what they've overcome in the years. So they signed the lease in 2016, and the first part of this was really just getting the museum open before they could buy the building. And so they raised on their own $1.2 million in order to make this happen, and we also, Prosper Portland also helped with a $300,000 community livability grant, but they raised a significant amount of money on their own and have a lot of skin in the game. And yes, the museum opened in 2018, and it's, the permanent exhibit is beyond the gate. And if you haven't seen it yet, I highly recommend that. You can always organize a tour, a special tour for the board, either virtually or in person when this COVID lifts, because it's a wonderful, wonderful exhibit. And they also have an exhibition gallery in the front for artists and other shows in addition to the permanent exhibit beyond the gate. Next slide, please. So here, you can see a couple vignettes, and you walk through there, it literally takes you through the whole history of the Chinese settlement in Portland, Oregon, and it's very, very inspiring. It's a beautiful, beautiful exhibit, very educational. Next slide, please. And you can see this is going into it from their front exhibit, what that looks like and features artists and performers. So, next slide, please. So here, this is the plan, so this is broken into two different phases. So phase one is just to acquire that building. Their landlord is very eager to just sell this building to them now and move on. And so they want to close on the building, and they're going to do, they're going to restore the historic facade on Southwest Third and do some seismic upgrades. Restoring the facade is important to a historic level, because partly Laura will get into that later in the financial part, but to pay back this loan, they're going to sell air rights, and having, they can sell those at historic, their air rights at a higher premium if it is that facade is brought to historic levels, and this building will then contribute to this historic district. It'll be a contributing factor. And then there's a second phase that you can see there in blue and red that they plan on putting a half of a second floor and more in the 24/25 timeframe. So this loan is just for the acquisition, it's really just about the first phase. Okay, next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, there it is. Okay, great. So this supports the Old Town Chinatown Action Plan. It is, if you recall, that the Action Plan was originally approved by commission and city council in 2014, and it was re-approved for another five years in 2019. And part of the Action Plan, a big part of it is to support key cultural institutions like the museum. We've supported the Japanese American Museum of Oregon, also Lansu Chinese Gardens, and another key institution there is the Jewish Museum, too. They form a great network. So then also, this will comply, the first phase of it with the redevelopment will comply with the business worker equity policy, at least this phase one, because we're going to have money in this, but it will not, phase two will not be required, because this is just a bridge loan for five years, and we hope to be out of the transaction and fully repaid within that five-year timeframe. So this is only regard to a phase, a phase one. Okay, next slide, please. Hey, this is where I'm going to turn it over to Laura, the lone underwriter who did the heavy lifting on this, Laura Alcinas, to go over the terms of the loan. Laura?
Thanks, Bernie. So on the slide, you can see a summary of the proposed loan terms. And as Bernie mentioned, effectively what is being proposed is a bridge loan that would enable PCHF to secure the property and then leverage that to execute on a capital campaign for the historic facade restoration, the seismic upgrades, and for the purchase price of the property. And development, an initial grant writing for this project. PCHF has heard from multiple foundations and funders that, you know, they're really reluctant to pledge large sums of money for capital improvements to a property that PHF does not, PCHF does not control or own. So the proposed loan would allow PCHF to acquire the property under its option to purchase in its lease and to launch a capital campaign for phase one of its planned renovations. As Bernie mentioned, phase one includes historic facade renovation or restoration, and then as well as the seismic upgrades that are intended to also contribute to the repayment of the loan. Repayment would come from funds raised in the capital campaign, also sale of air rights or transfer of development rights above the building. So air rights above historically designated buildings are worth more, they're more valuable, and a sale of those rights at the conclusion of the phase one restoration should serve to pay down the loan substantially. And as mentioned, the balance is anticipated to come from capital campaign contributions. So that's intended to be that sort of that first bridge, and after the proposed loan is repaid, PCHF could move on to the phase two that you saw of its investment into the property with additional fundraising and leverage additional funds to add that second story, a roofed up terrace, to expand the museum, its offices, and its operations. So ultimately, this proposed loan represents the opportunity to take that first crucial step. Property ownership would confer long-term stability to PCHF and the Portland Chinatown Museum and anchor it as a key cultural and arts institution in this neighborhood. Next slide.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Comments?
We have a question for maybe Laura, is, do we know the appraised value of the property?
Yes, so we got an appraisal. The appraised value came in at the purchase, it's $2.2 million for the property, and interestingly, the appraised value was, the highest of best use was determined to be a redevelopment of the property. And so this, you know, kind of, this project would indeed save that building in that neighborhood, because a sale would ultimately probably result in redevelopment.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. Now, I understand we have three representatives of the Portland Chinatown History Foundation with us today, is that correct? Sarah Chung, Jacqueline Peterson-Loomis, and Greg Cantor. Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like to say a few words? I'll let you decide how you'd like to organize your time.
I'll start off. My name is Sarah Chung, and thank you, Director Branham, and the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to be here today and consider approval of the loan. My name is Sarah Chung. I grew up, my family actually lived in Australia, but I grew up, we came into Portland quite often back in the 60s and 70s to come in to shop, and it was still a very vibrant neighborhood with residents and businesses. My family got very involved with, my parents got very involved with the Chinese community. I even had to attend the weekend Chinese language school. That was held upstairs of the Chinese Consolidated Benevolent Association Building that's across the street on Davis Street. I have wonderful memories of all the traditional foods and the organizations, the social organizations that were there, and Chinese was actually my first language, but over the years, I, from lack of use, I've not kept up my proficiency. My husband actually has a longer history. His grandparents, he's a third-generation Chinese-American here in Portland, and his grandparents and great uncles own a butcher shop business in the building that's next door to our museum building on Davis Street. So that would be where the barrel room is currently, behind that facade. I won't go into the history, because Bernie's already talked about it, but it became real clear that with the neighborhood changing, that there was a group of our Chinatown elders and people like Terry, myself, and others of my generation, who were getting very concerned that the stories that they had would disappear, you know, with the changing of the architectural fabric. They were afraid that their stories would be unrecorded and lost, and their history would be erased. You know, we still have elders living who were born in the neighborhood. We have one who was born where the fish pond of the Lansu Garden is located.
Sarah Chung, Jaclyn Peterson-Loomis, and Greg Cantor. Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like to say a few words? I'll let you decide how you'd like to organize your time.
I'll start off. My name is Sarah Chung, and thank you Director Brennan and the four commissioners for allowing us to be here today and consider approval of the loan. My name is Sarah Chung. I grew up, my family actually lived in Australia, but I grew up, we came into Portland quite often back in the sixties and seventies to come in to shop. And it was still a very vibrant neighborhood with residents and businesses. My family got very involved with, my parents got very involved with the Chinese community. I even had to attend the weekend Chinese language school. That was held upstairs of the Chinese Consolidated Benevolent Association Building that's across the street on Davis Street. I have wonderful memories of all the traditional foods and the organizations, the social organizations that were there. And Chinese was actually my first language. But over the years, I, from lack of use, I've not kept up my proficiency. My husband actually has a longer history. His grandparents, he's a third-generation Chinese-American here in Portland. And his grandparents and great uncles own a butcher shop business in the building that's next door to our museum building on Davis Street. So that would be where the barrel room is currently, behind that facade. I won't go into the history because Bernie's already talked about it. But it became real clear that with the neighborhood changing, that there was a group of our Chinatown elders and people like Terry, myself, and others of my generation who were getting very concerned that the stories that they had would disappear, you know, with the changing of the architectural fabric. They were afraid that their stories would be unrecorded and lost and their history would be erased. You know, we still have elders living who were born in the neighborhood. We have one who was born where the fish pond of the Lansu Garden is located. We have another one who was born in the Palm Hotel. And so while they're still alive, they really, really want to focus on the shared memory and the sense of place, which they still call home and is of high importance. So I am committed to helping them achieve that. And as Bernie has said, our work has been focused chiefly on constructing a home, a museum. And it'd be, and is Oregon's first museum of Chinese-American history, as well as contemporary Asian-American arts. And we hope to be part of the preservation and economic revitalization of this Old Town Chinatown neighborhood, as well as be an important destination point for, you know, arts and culture and history, as well as education. So as mentioned, our dream's been growing for the past eight years. And our first capital campaign, as was mentioned, did raise about $1.25 billion to renovate our current building. And so we were able to use that to establish the installation of our permanent exhibition. And I just want to say that since we've opened, I realize that this museum has become a very rich asset to not just the Chinese community and the neighborhood, the community at large, too. And the exhibitions and programs and events that we have hosted have helped our visitors learn more about the rich history of this very, very old neighborhood. And we're hoping that we, again, are part of the transformation of this neighborhood as an important cultural destination site, working alongside with our other neighborhood cultural organizations. When the museum was completed and open in December 2018, many of our elders have become volunteers and docents, and they love telling their story. They really, it makes the history come alive for the visitor, and it's rewarding in both ways. So I hope that by completing this museum, we actually own the building. We will become the first full-service Asian-American museum of history, art, and culture, and that it will help to fulfill, it will mark the fulfillment of the museum founders' dream for their own family, as well as creating a legacy for the future. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jackie Peterson-Loomis. I'm a retired professor of history and comparative American culture. And I have been working in Old Town Chinatown since the late 90s. I'm, Sarah and Terry were among the very earliest folks in the Chinese community of their generation to really catch fire on this idea because it was something that their elders had been talking about and had a dream about, but it didn't look like that was really ever going to happen. And I had been working in the neighborhood. I started something called the Old Town History Project, which was an umbrella for a number of ethnic groups who made Old Town their home. I found this neighborhood, I have to tell you, in 10 minutes after moving to Portland as an historian. It is just, it's just the richest and most important part of Portland in my view. And so before I even started working with the Chinese community, I was working with the Nikkei, with the Jewish, Greek, and African-American communities, all of which have a story here. And it's wonderful to tell you that just to come, kind of come full circle, that we're doing a lot of Zoom projects now, of course, because we are closed, like everyone else, to keep the public safe and our employees safe. But our most recent program was actually the artist who are African-American and Asian-American and particularly Islander, who recently created a mural that's across the street from our building on Davis Street. And it was in honor of Black Lives Matter. And Alex Chin, who's a well-known muralist in town, he brought this group together. But it was, this is sort of, this is how we are. We are very much current, and at the same time, we are focused and centered on trying to not only recover and preserve the history and the buildings of this very important historic district, but also to bring this story to the general public. You know, it's one of the very few stories in an Oregon that doesn't have much of an immigrant history, unfortunately, that is one of the very few stories that isn't really known. And yet Portland was the second largest Chinatown in the United States in 1900. And this population was immensely important in the development, the economic development of the state. So we do have, got only a city mission, but a statewide mission, and part of it does have to do with the very preservation of the place. You know, the elders used to say, you know, that it's about the memory. It's about, the history is bound up in the memories, and the memories are inside the building. They're on the street, and you take down a building to your gentrification on the entire neighborhood, and you begin to evolve, you know, that very, very significant history of the ethnic groups, you know, who struggled for decades and who were barred from citizenship. And so this is, this is a reclamation project in one of those. And I am, as executive director, I've done this voluntarily now for more than 10 years. And I'm happy to say that among the successes that we seem to be enjoying recently, that we've had considerable interest from several foundations in helping us to strengthen our professional staffing, and that includes a replacement for me. So I don't intend to leave completely, I'll be an advisor, but it is time for us to become a full-fledged Asian-American museum from top to bottom and to become part of that kind of complex of cultures and cultural institutions and art institutions in the city and state. So I hope you understand that the purchase of this building is what is opening the door for us. We wrote a grant last year to the Cultural Advocacy Commission. It's kind of a gutsy thing to do because you had to own the building to be considered. But they considered us anyway. They looked at the proposal, which is the project that we brought to you of doing the restoration, which will help us buy the building, and then to fulfill the full museum. And so we were not, we didn't make the final cut of 11 projects that would have been funded in this biennium. We asked for $1 million. However, we did make the pipeline. We are part of the second group of 11 who are in the pipeline for future funding. And we had great accolades from the committee. So that was very, very heartwarming and encouraging. And I do think, I personally believe, and this is my experience as an academic and an exhibition baker, that what we do is really good, it's really good work, and these are good people. And I think that this is, I mean, this is more than doable. I will do whatever I can in coming years to ensure that it is the pride of, along with the garden and the Nikkei Museum and the Jewish Museum, and hopefully some kind of African-American museum, too, in this neighborhood in years to come. Thank you very much.
Members, yeah, members of the board, thank you for having us here. And first of all, let me, let me thank Bernie and Laura for a lot of hard work and a lot of creativity that went into this. I am a retired CEO of Northwest Natural. I actually spent more than 30, more than 20 years working in Old Town Chinatown. And I can attest to really the importance of this museum as an anchor for the stability and growth and future vibrance of Old Town Chinatown. But more important than all that, my wife is Chinese, and her parents came to Oregon in the 1800s and settled, her parents, her mother's, and her parents, mother's parents, settled in Portland in Old Town Chinatown and grew up there, learned English there. Their whole social life was around that. And my mother-in-law is on the board and is, has been a force for its, with Jackie, for its development over the years. I would say, I've served on a lot of nonprofit boards. What I can tell you about the Portland Chinatown Board, Museum Board, is that it is small and scrappy. It's an organization with a lot of passion. And strangely enough, it has done quite well during this era COVID. All nonprofits have revenue issues, and especially so during this COVID crisis. But the Portland Chinatown Museum is small, it's scrappy, it's very efficient at what it does. It has a lot of volunteer help. And I'm convinced that the, about 1.5 million that it will take to get that first phase done, the facade renovation is eminently doable by this organization. It was, last year, early in 2019, we received a grant from Murdoch, which allowed us to take the board through a very extensive strategic planning process. And part of that strategic planning process was, you know, what are your, what are the main objectives and goals of, for the next few years? And number one was acquiring the building. It was getting in the way, the lease was getting in the way of the organization's ability to convince foundations and large individual contributors that it had a future. And it, this loan will solidify it in this, in this building, and it will solidify its ability to raise additional dollars from foundations, the public sector, private sector, and individual contributors. And so thank you for your consideration of the loan. And it will do an immense job of improving this organization and Chinatown as well. So thank you.
Thanks to you. Thanks to all three of you for your comments and for joining us today. We really appreciate it. Gives us a really good window into the project and what the organization's doing and what your plans are for the future. So very much appreciated. Would the commissioners like to ask any questions or make any comments? Mr. Platt?
Yeah, thanks, Trigus. That the historic Chinatown is getting the attention it deserves to restore its, it's a, it's a short character or maintain it. I'm curious, just as a matter of practicality, where you anticipate raising the funds necessary to pay off the loan within five years? It's a sizable loan. And I know I've heard stories about your success in fundraising in the past. I just wanted to get a sense going into the future. On behalf of the agency, looking after the agency's funds, how you plan to pay off the loan?
Can I speak to this first, Craig? I have, one of the first things, we've already begun to make a considerable, we made an effort already to identify some of the major foundations in our community aside that might be interested in this project. And I think that's one of the first things we're going to do in the spring. We're working on capacity, but at the same time, we're working on development towards the capital campaign. But I had a history with the National Endowment for the Humanities. And we're going to go to them this spring to see whether we can interest, interest down in a challenge grant. Sorry. A challenge grant, which would give us the opportunity to match one-to-one $750,000 that we might raise. And so I had one conversation with them already when we were being considered by the Cultural Advocacy Commission, and they expressed an interest. There are also, we've already had grant, major grants from most of the major foundations in Oregon. And I have one application now into Murdoch for a sizable amount. And I think that our opportunities are really quite good to put together enough money to handle the first phase, and then to use the money that we receive from the sale of the air rights to bring the loan down by two-thirds. And it will pay two-thirds of the cost of the building. And so depending upon the success of the, of the capital campaign thus far, it really is a campaign in two parts, that either, either we take a rest, you know, and use money that we've already raised to pay off the loan, or we go for a conventional loan for the remainder. I don't think that that would be as difficult to handle at that point in time, although it would not be my preference to be carrying any debt if we could avoid it. We also have a very good friend in Ron Chu, who is the amazed, truly amazing founder of the New Wing Root, for which he raised $27 million. And I've known Ron for 20 years, and he's retiring at the end of this month. And we had expected him to help us from Seattle, but most recently said that he thought he might come down here to help us. So I think that we have friends, and we have, I think, a lot of goodwill out there. I think our track record is very good so far for a small organization. We're producing really excellent work, and I think we're filling a niche. And so I, you know, I don't want to be overconfident, but I, but I actually do feel good about, about our prospects here to raise the money to pay the building back within that time period. I just don't think it's formidable. And I want to say, too, that, you know, this board of Chinese elders, you know, this was not a population that, you know, because they were forbidden, you know, from even working outside in Chinatown when they were growing up. I mean, they were forbidden for joining, you know, social organizations. One of the people in this group was the first Chinese-American in the city to become a member of the Lions Club. I mean, they had no, they were not, with the glass seal, and they didn't punch through to the corporation. So it's amazing how much, how much effort they have made to raise money to even get where we are. And so that kind of commitment is such that, I mean, I don't have much of a doubt that this will, that this will be successful.
Yeah, Commissioner Platt, maybe I'd add, too, that I see, having been involved in a lot of fundraising efforts, we're going to find foundation dollars. I think this has a special touch to corporate Portland from a diversity perspective, that I think we will be able to garner some dollars from the, from the private sector charitable contributions. And then individuals, wealthy individuals as well. We've got, have started doing some work with some of the larger donors to the Oregon Historical Society. And I'm convinced we'll end up with some dollars out of that as well. So the 1.5 for the first phase, I don't think is, is the toughest challenge faced. I think probably that second phase is going to be, is going to be the tougher phase. But that, with, and then with the sale of the air rights, being able to pay down the loan. We've had discussions with Craft III. I think the ability, once we've got the equity of that first million, three million, four, I think getting another financer in to take the remainder of the loan will be, will be relatively easy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do the rest of the commissioners have any comments? Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Pratt asked pretty much the same thing I was going to ask, and I'm fine with the answer. I think it's great. I was just really concerned about, again, because of the COVID in which we're in this season, about the fundraising as well. And I'm satisfied with the answer. Thank you. It's great to hear the history in the background. I remember hanging out in no time, too, so, yeah.
Do you know about the Golden West?
Yes, my parents used to tell me about it.
Well, you know, it's an outdoor exhibit now.
Oh, okay, I'll have to check it out.
You need, you go out, all the windows, and they're sound.
Okay. Well, if there are no further comments, then I would just thank all of you for joining us today. And I would thank Bernie and Laura for their presentation. And if one of the commissioners would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7407, we'll go ahead and vote.
So move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of resolution number 7407?
Aye.
Great, passes unanimously. So thank you very much, and really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to seeing how things go. We're excited.
We are, too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Bernie. Boy, thanks to Bernie. Thanks to Laura. Thank you all. Have a wonderful season. We hope to see you at the museum. We'll try to arrange a special tour for you.
We'd love to do that.
Okay. And we have a new website. Please go to our website.
I'll look forward to visiting it as soon as soon as we can. That'll be great.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. So item number nine is an information item and this is the update on 18 month agency priorities. And this is a continuation of our discussion from the retreat. So I'll turn it over to Kimberly.
Thanks, Chair Cruz. So at our retreat, we started to talk about the key priorities for the next 18 months, so the rest of this fiscal year and then getting into fiscal year 21, 22. For some reason, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we're planning for 21, 22, but for 21, 22. And so we are going to continue with the presentation that we had. We'll start, we'll start over again just for the any viewing public and as a refresher, since it was sort of late in the morning and want to ground us in the questions that we we would love to hear your input on. When we close up our presentation, which is what are two to three projects or programs or initiatives that you're most excited or concerned about? What are you most excited or concerned about? What's most important and why? So at the, you're going to hear from the executive team members who will walk through each of our key objective areas. And then at the end, we'll ask for your input on that. So I think my, I think Lisa's going to kick us off with the presentation. Thank you.
This is Serena, really quick. I have to jump off and I I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have to jump off at four because of what's going on with our health at the state and I have to jump on as a, and I'll catch up with you. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm going to get going. Justin, it tells me I can't turn my video on. I'm not allowed. I know I'm having like bad hearing.
Lisa, I've shared my screen. Hopefully you'll be able to see this.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Well, as Kimberly mentioned, what today's presentation is going to be is a bit of a recap and then some new information. And then perhaps we could put in the chat field, Justin, kind of the the questions Kimberly covered around the two to three top projects, programs, initiatives you're most excited about, what seems important and why. Again, we're going to go through goal by goal based on the strategic plan. So with that next slide, Justin. As a reminder, this is just the diagram that helps helps frame out the five goals of the strategic plan and some of the tools and efforts and initiatives that we undertake to implement those, ranging from healthy, complete neighborhoods to equitable wealth creation to to access to high quality employment, to partnerships as well as effective stewardship. And clearly the partnerships and the stewardship will be the new information for the commission here today. Next slide, Justin. So as we think about neighborhoods, we touched on this briefly and hopefully can continue to build upon it in today's presentation, answering some of the questions that the commission asked during our retreat. Much of our work in the healthy, complete neighborhoods goal is really done through our action plans in Old Town, in North Northeast, in Lentz, as well as Gateway, as well as other areas like the Central East Side. And one of the primary tools that we we have to support small businesses as well as property owners who may be interested in redeveloping their property is our prosperity investment program grant. Over the past five years, we've seen an investment of $5 million with 68% of those resources going to buy POC property owners or businesses. The next kind of performance metric that that we tend to track in our action plans in our communities are our community livability grant investments. These are investments that go to key anchor nonprofit partners within the community who provide important services from homeless youth services to kind of community gathering spots like the Sons of Haiti Lodge in North Northeast or to workforce kind of providers and partners like VOS in the Central East Side. We've provided about 6 million in community livability grants over the five year period to just over 75 nonprofits. And then last but not least, we take a look at how our resources leverage partner investment in our communities, knowing that it's really important both on a financial side as well as an outcome side that we're thinking about our partnerships. And so what you see in this leveraged number, which is a three to one leveraged number of either private or partner public resources to the 72 million of Prosper Investment, really reflects partnerships like our public-private partnerships that we're able to accomplish through our our redevelopment projects that we are doing with community input like 38 Davis, which is in Old Town, which really reflected the importance of middle income housing to the Old Town community and just mixed use, making sure that there is kind of greater 24/7 activity in Old Town, similar to some of the challenges we heard about coming off of the previous presentation, all the way through to our public partnerships with partners like P-Bot, like the Parks Department and things like the new, the new park out in Gateway, as well as Foster along Foster Avenue. Next slide, Justin. So and as we look kind of to the future, we got super helpful feedback, actually, as we share this with our community budget committee. So kind of thinking about the why of some of these things as we particularly as we ask for the board's input around priorities. So Broadway Corridor, this is really the beginning to the implementation of our community benefit agreement and our development agreement, which clearly kind of requires some early design as well as site prep work. So what we anticipate over the coming 18 months for Broadway Corridor, that is necessary groundwork and foundational work for the community benefits are the our intergovernmental agreements or IGAs with our bureau partners that will start the design and engineering of streets, the parks and open space concept plan, et cetera, as well as some site prep that will kind of allow for tax lots to be created, new development to occur, et cetera, which really is hinges on the demolition of the main USPS facility. Our action plans, we're really looking to spend the time kind of doubling down on our relationship building within each of those communities. We recognize that our community-based partnerships are key and critical to the success of each of the goals in those action plan areas, as well as ensuring kind of shared outcomes and seeing kind of the implementation of the goals. So in North Northeast, that is really looking at moving forward our partnership with the Project Working Group on the Williams and Russell Development, making progress on the five goals of the North Northeast CDI that span from supporting small businesses all the way to the cultural business hub that we're looking to get an RFP out on early next year, through to really looking at a results-based accountability analysis, digging deep into kind of who benefits from our grants programs and how do we ensure maximum benefit, acknowledging the harm and the impacts that Prosper has had and the city has had in the past in North Northeast on the Black community. In Lansing Gateway, in terms of our action plans, we're really looking to kind of conclude, make sure that we put into full operations the projects that the community has long been looking for at Lentz Town Center as well as at 106 and Halsey. And a lot of this is really focused on the commercial tenancy through our affordable commercial tenancy program, as well as we actually received in partnership with some community-based partners, grants from Metro out in the Gateway area. And then in Old Town Chinatown, there's really a lot of interest and priority on seeing future redevelopment of the Fourth and Burnside property we have in partnership with Colis Development, as well as at Block 24 and 25, with Block 24 being a partnership with the with the Chinese, the Lancy Chinese Garden. And we also know that in Old Town right now, kind of there is active and immediate need amongst small businesses. And then the last is just making sure that we are aligning any new Tiff district discussions, particularly in East Portland, with community-based development opportunities and really understanding those opportunities. Next slide, Justin. And with that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Tori.
Yep. Thank you, Lisa. Afternoon, Commissioner, Chair Cruz and Commissioners, as well as afternoon Executive Director Brannum. As we continue on these themes, I want to take a few moments to walk us through how it is we are going about continuing to generate and jobs within our city as well as placements. As you know, this is an important function within our agency in terms of how we go about both measuring and understanding the true health and vitality of our local economy and our ability to create livable wages, middle income jobs. For us, over the last five years within our strategic plan, as evidenced here, we have been able to show a real strong capacity to continue to grow our jobs within our city, which is in step with just our local economy and its growth. Just over 14,000 jobs have either been created or placed. And to break out those two, just to give a better sense of that, that's about 7,000, this is over 7,000 jobs in terms of jobs placements and just a little over 4,000 within traded sector job growth and then 2,000 for small business. So you kind of get a sense of where those jobs are showing up and also the placement. We also find that the second to just seeing job growth within our city, more and more companies realize that it's not enough to simply recruit and create jobs, which is obviously a very healthy indicator of vitality for business. But also just as important is to really understand the condition of the culture within their companies to make sure that they can not only recruit diverse talent, but that the culture within their companies is inclusive and healthy enough to retain that talent. And so increasingly, many of our programs have continued to shift more and more towards how do we help with culture change? And so that's why we highlight here the importance of two programs. The first is Portland Means Progress, which is really only two years old. And so it's still really in this early starts, but as of, I believe, earlier this week, we have now reached over 100 companies that have made commitments towards Portland Means Progress, which, as you recall, is a three-pronged strategy to help companies engage and invest in diversity, inclusion and equity work. And that's expressing itself through creating meaningful workplace experiences for up and coming youth and college students, as well as B2B or business-to-business procurement, sourcing locally for BIPOC entrepreneurs. And then lastly, the the final thread of what Portland Means Progress is achieving is helping companies wrestle with and understand from a standpoint of resources and guidance around culture change. And then secondly is Tech Town. Tech Town is really the the initiator of this conversation, having been around for over five years, particularly working within the tech sector. So we currently have 28 companies that are still actively engaged with Tech Town as we continue to pivot and shift that program, knowing that it is in time, it's in need of some bit of overhaul to continue to improve on the work done, but more importantly, to address some of the real thorny and stubborn issues, really seeing the kind of equity and inclusion within the tech industry that companies know they need and want in order to remain competitive. And then lastly, I think the final element of our work within our strategic plan, when you think about both the creation of jobs and the culture change, is those businesses grow in terms of their competitiveness, being able to then reinvest back into the city. And one of the primary vehicles for that has been our E-Zone program, which is a tax incentive program that allows companies to land in some spaces within our city, buildings that they can move into and then in turn they reinvest back into the city and the city economy. And we've seen about $1.3 billion of private investment coming through our E-Zone program. So not only are we getting the incentives by the reinvestment, but also one of the unique things with our E-Zone program is that we have assigned with it public benefit agreements. And so in that case, you're getting a double bonus of companies not only investing financially back into the city, but also again, making a commitment around such things as B2B procurement locally, as well as culture change. So as we think about this year that we are stepping into, next slide, please. We know that our 18 months looks radically different than what we'd ever imagined just 11 months ago. And so many, if not all of what we're sharing definitely is under the the understanding of a work that has now become that much more challenging and also requires a different level of nimbleness. And so for us, in particular, thinking around traded sector companies and the industries that we support, because of COVID, we know many companies and industries have been radically impacted, particularly hospitality, restaurants, hoteliers and service industry. But we also know that not all industries have had the same level of impact. And so we take that in into consideration in terms of what are the types of supports that are needed today? And as we potentially move into recovery over the next two to three years, how might we show up as an agency to continue to support the local economy thoughtfully? Now, so for us, that means over the next 18 months, continue to take a strategic look of how we invest our time and resources through our implementation of our cluster action plan, which again, the thrust of that is to help companies become more inclusive, as well as helping those inclusive companies grow. Some of that starts with what you would imagine is some of the basics of going with a listening posture. So being very proactive to engage in business outreach for both with companies that we already have relationships and industries that they represent. It also means continuing the work of being very thoughtful of how we pivot, the way in which we engage in our conversations. So for us, that's already been major strides over the last 10 months to move towards a virtual platform and being able to create programming that it continues to help businesses receive the supports that they need, take advantage of the opportunities and information to help make the necessary pivots to stabilize themselves. And in some instances, depending on the industry, potentially even find new market shares and and expansion opportunities. Although right now, the primary focus is really on stabilization. And this also means that we will update some of our performance metrics, taking into consideration that it's no longer suffices to simply have outputs, but we really need to have outcomes. And those outcomes will continue to be increasingly informed by our current COVID kind of economic disruption and crisis that we're experiencing across the city. And then lastly, when we think about the work over the next 18 months, this means also enabling employers to retain their employees by accessing accessing capital and financing assistance, whether that comes from resources that we currently hold as an agency, but also doing some of the necessary and thoughtful work with underlenders and partners, both regionally and nationally, to understand what's available and how we can potentially help businesses position themselves for such resources. So those are the key highlights that we are considering over the next 18 months. And we know that this work is dynamic and really is dictated in many ways by our availability of the vaccine and how we as a city are able to navigate the next few months. So we look forward to working with you and continue to provide you the updates along the way. The next slide, we'll get into our third kind of arm of our work, which is equitable wealth creation. And this really highlights for us the key themes. When you think about equitable wealth creation, it's been primarily through small business creation. We know that it is one of the primary vehicles where individuals grow their assets, as well as their ability to have upward mobility. For us, that's looked like a number of programs over the last five years, really centering on equity. The first one started with one of the big struggles we have found historically, it's been dated, that many companies, particularly founders of color, really wrestle with, as well as women, accessing capital early on to help really see their business or their idea be launched. And so about five years ago, we started the Inclusive Startup Fund. And in that fund, we were able to work with a local partner, Elevate Capital, and we've invested over $2.3 million through that fund to 26 startup companies that have now created 195 jobs, of which 91 of those have gone towards entrepreneurs of color or BIPOC employees, which is encouraging. And we realized this is really the tip of the iceberg for us in terms of how we go about thinking, how do we continue to create new markets, new opportunities and funding is one of those key components of that early on. Second to that is really creating new places for just market accessibility, as well as technical support, how to grow the business's know-how. And two of our signature programs, which have really allowed for us to do that thoughtfully and adequately over the last four or five years, has been our Inclusive Business Resource Network, which is a network of 21 partners who we work with and fund, who provide technical support to businesses throughout the course of a year. And over the last four to five years, through our strategic plan, we have listed here over 3,574 businesses have received some level of technical assistance, whether that be a minimum 10 hours up to 30 hours and many of them even over the course of two to three years, realizing that another component, aside from access to new money and access to funding, is also just access to business know-how, really helping the entrepreneur figure out how to grow their acumen and their ability to grow strong and viable small businesses. And then also, as I mentioned, access to new markets is another critical component. And one of the things that we've been able to do is just highlighting our might- And one of the things that we've been able to do is just highlighting our My People's Market is just one expression of ways in which we are working to continue to create more visibility for the many emerging and resilient BIPOC entrepreneurs that make up the, the local economy for our city. And so as a number that shows just the level of interest in our city to a signature event, we've had over twenty thousand people come out and attend over the, over our five offerings of markets over the last three years, where we offer them twice a year. The last element, we'll swing it over to Lisa, who will talk about construction and how that showed up to also be a viable way in which we can help spur local business growth and opportunities for wealth creation.
Thanks, Tori. So the figure that you see on the left is a reflection of total constructions costs resulting from Prosper's partnerships, both with the private sector in terms of vertical development, as well as with our public partners, is over the five-year period, there was over four hundred and sixty million of total construction projects let. Of that, a hundred and seven million went to certified firms per the agency's business and workforce equity policy requirements. That's twenty three percent, which is above our goal of twenty percent, which we have been working diligently on kind of increasing that, those outcomes and those outputs over the, the past five years. And then we wanted to highlight that of that hundred and seven million, ninety three million went to MBE, WBE and DBE firms. So forty two million went to MBE firms, thirty seven million went to WBE firms, and fourteen million went to DBE firms, so only about three percent went to ESB firms of that hundred and seven million. Next slide. I think I'll hand it back to Tori, we'll take the first half, I'll take the second half.
Oh, so again, thinking about the next eighteen months and some of the key priorities when we think about the role that small businesses play within our city and wanting to continue the good work and necessary work to help to stand up and stabilize BIPOC entrepreneurs in our city. We will continue to commit towards the delivery of technical assistance through our Inclusive Business Resource Network. The hope is that we can, over the next eighteen months, add a clip of at least about a thousand businesses receiving services through that network. And it could particularly be as high as thirteen hundred. But we know that that's going to be an incredibly important piece to all of this. And also prepare ourselves for the next request for proposal within our network. We have now reached our kind of end of the initial contract, which was the last three years. And now we're moving into a new RFP, where we will then launch out an opportunity for partners and new partners to consider joining the network to provide such necessary and important services. The next area of focus is continuing the, the work with My People's Market, Mercatus, the collective, which is our platform Prosper Leads, as well as doing our B two B activities within the virtual space. Again, shifting like so many other business owners have done. And these platforms continue to be a real vital artery for businesses, many of them who are early starts or don't currently have strong enough local online platforms or e-commerce. So these websites and the, and the programs that we're creating with partners such as Build Oregon really are creating a new avenue for businesses, both to learn what it means to really see their business show up in this virtual space, as well as creating the necessary infrastructure to support them along the way. And then lastly, again, within these platforms, it helps with just creating opportunities for buying local campaigns that makes it simply as a click and a curbside pickup and doing it in a way that is obviously socially distanced and safe during this COVID season. But we believe many of the behaviors and patterns, shopping online that we are all participating in now, those are going to remain. And so we really find that the work that we're doing now should be evergreen for businesses long term. And then the last element that we are working on is actually something really exciting, where we received a USDA grant. It's a planning grant for thinking about what does it mean to create a regional food ecosystem that is both driven with equity and resiliency? And so for us, that is a conversation and a work that we're having with partners, Equal Trust, and we currently have ten other BIPOC-led food leaders, innovative organizations, supporting that work. And the goal of that USDA grant would allow us to do three things over the next two years as it's planning grant. The first is to build the capacity of those partners and those partnerships, and also to do community engagement of what it actually would look like to create some type, this type of framework around a stronger food ecosystem, which we know that the region and the city is already strong and noted for. And yet, how do we grow that and ensure that equity is infused into it? And last but not least, we believe that the result of this work, we've been able to create a really a one-of-a-kind regional food systems action plan. And so again, thinking around how food is very central to us, how Portland is noted as a foodie city, a lot of great infrastructure here. And also in particular, too, because of the hard-hit nature of what COVID has done within our restaurants, so many businesses are sheltering and closing and needing to pivot. And so this is also, I think, stands as an opportunity to figure out, can we create new pathways for many of these individuals in the food industry to find new ways to get their products to market? At this time, I will shift the last few key priorities within our wealth creation over to Lisa.
So similar to what Tori described, I think we're kind of managing our TIF and construction-based work really focused on the near-term just support that is immediately needed in response to COVID, in response to COVID, all the way through to thinking about how do we provide pipelines of opportunities into the future? So the first bullet really captures the work that staff has prioritized around providing direct TIF-based support to businesses, and it's about a hundred and fifty businesses that we have supported and will continue to support through our grants, such as the Repair Grant Program that we launched, as well as loan and lease modifications to tenants that Prosper has, as well as loan clients that we have. And then continuing to work to identify new loans or greater flexibility to loans on things like our EDA programs. As we, as we think about construction equity and the future of construction equity, coming before the board in the next couple of months will be an update to our business and workforce equity policy objectives. So we really see the coming eighteen months as an opportunity to implement that new policy that will include a proposed fund, which will support broader technical assistance and growth to both small businesses and workforce, similar to what the Tori's team has been working on related to COEP. This would be directly on Prosper, Prosper-sponsored and partnered projects. And then last but not least, there has been a team of staff who have been actively discussing and working on scoping individual initiatives to launch the Developers of Color program. Particular areas of focus for the coming eighteen months that will be key priorities is the lending team has been looking at our commercial property redevelopment loan products and how we adjust those to really support either folks who are already in development, who are looking to scale up, or folks who are in the industry, i.e. contractors, architects, engineers, et cetera, who want to move directly, who are looking to move directly into the role of developers and capture the wealth generation opportunities that are created off of financing of real estate projects. And then also just providing kind of the assistance along the way and the networking along the way, including through direct opportunities through Prosper's RFPs to, to developers who are either actively in the market or contractors and architects looking to get into development. So with that, I think the next slide will move us into partnerships, and I'll hand it back to Tori.
Right, so we appreciate your attention and engagement. We're, we're well over halfway through, so there's always a lot of content. We're throwing it at you, the numbers skittles colors at this point, but if we want to transition and talk around the importance of partnerships, this word is incredibly important to us as an agency. Well over, you know, probably eighty to ninety percent of how we show up in the city and the effectiveness has everything to do with the health and the growth of many partnerships that we have. And so this stands as a, a really an important slide to talk around how we're doing this work with others, the way in which we're either building the capacity in the city to, to help the city better serve itself and our ultimate goals together. So here we show a few numbers that are really important to talk around the work, particularly starting with our Neighborhood Prosperity Network partners. As you know, these are community districts throughout the city where there are both diversity of individuals living. There is maybe concentrations of lower income and potential poverty, and also potential for market forces to change the, the landscape of those communities with gentrification. And so we've identified these almost nine years, a little over nine years ago, as places where we wanted to invest time and resources to, to really help empower the community, do their work. And so the number there just stands to show you the sheer amount of time that the community spends, both in advocacy of growing its local economy in those commercial districts, as well as the kind of support they're receiving from us to do that work. It also shows the importance of working with partners such as Venture Portland, which shows up in support of local community districts by strengthening the local business association efforts. They are again, helping to galvanize and show small businesses how they can work together collectively towards a greater good. And again, you see there just tremendous hours being put in by participants in that way. So those are important to note, that the work doesn't just happen simply by funds. It also happens by grit and sweat and persistence of those partners and organizations engaged in the work. Lisa, let you share on just the importance of TIF and affordable housing? And then if you want to just do the last slide too, you can jump into that as well.
Yeah, that would be great. So the other key partner we really think about as we implement the strategic plan, both kind of looking at our accomplishments over the past five years, as well as forward-looking our city partners. So clearly, there are partnerships with the Transportation Bureau, Parks Bureau, et cetera. But we have a pretty close working relationship with the Housing Bureau, where we are jointly funding projects and programs, ranging from the, the mixed income projects that we jointly funded in Lentz, all the way through to Gateway, really focused in areas where we know that either displacement or gentrification has occurred or is at risk of occurring. And as reflected here, there are over thirty one hundred new units that were developed via our partnership with PHB, where PHB's resources were really invested into affordable housing units at sixty percent median family income and below. Ours were able to expand that to also regulate and kind of keep affordable for a certain period of time at a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent median family income and below. And then market rate clearly are those units that are allowed to go out into the market. This is also, this also reflects our partnership with them in North Northeast, where we are able to complement their home repair and their home ownership programs, all based on the preference policy for folks who have been displaced from that community to have access into homeownership opportunities or repair homes if, if they were able to stay in the community. Next slide, Justin. So what that looks like looking into the future is clearly there is a close relationship with housing, as well as our bureau partners, as we think about key areas of the city and key community partners who are really interested in thinking about the future of TIF, how that interfaces between economic development goals and affordable housing goals, particularly in Cully, along the southwest corridor, based on the planning work that Metro has led, as well as working with our East Portland NPN partners. And then there is a broader policy initiative underway with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, where we'll continue to track their policy-based work and share what we're doing on the implementation front with the community-based coalition that they're working with regarding policies. And then last but not least, we're supporting Albina Vision Trust, and that's a kind of a inner-city bureau support for Albina Vision Trust as they think about the future of the lower Albina area, including the area around the Rose Quarter, as well as the kind of the Portland, a partnership with Portland Public Schools. With that, I will hand it back to Tori.
Yeah, so I'll end our piece, just again, highlighting some of the larger, more macro conversations that we are a part of, and, and also again, highlighting the importance of partnerships. We are currently working, will continue during this time that we're experiencing the pandemic, of implementing our economic stabilization plan, as well as facilitating our Economic Recovery Task Force that has been led under the leadership of the mayor, as well as Commissioner Hardesty. And again, these are places where we're gathering well over a hundred individuals, representing both public and private partnerships to continue to think strategically of how do we respond thoughtfully, nimbly, and with a forecast of kind of future forward with that work? Another area that really partnership is showing up simultaneously, doing this work of thinking about today is also thinking about what does our strategic plan look like regionally, both workforce and economic development strategies? And so we have been doing and participating in this work with Metro, GPI and many other partners as we think about what's a regional, the regional plan for us as, as a statewide impact on economic development and workforce opportunities. This plan is something that's already been in the works, as it is required for us to do for SEDS, but because of COVID, it's also required that we shift and think, what, what can we do in the interim as well? And so both, we're doing both and in that conversation. We're also coming up on our final year, so it's ten years that we've been able to see and support really thriving Neighborhood Prosperity Network initiatives and programs throughout the city. And so for them, as we have talked with you over the last few years, they have been positioning themselves to ask some of those harder questions of what does it mean to establish new business models, to sustain the work, and how do they stand themselves up and support themselves long term? Each district is in its own unique space, some having already kind of had resolution on what this looks like, but many of them, if not all of them, are still wrestling through, how do they do this in a thoughtful and, and meaningful way of what does it mean to continue this work and the funding of economic development opportunities for the communities that they serve? And then last but not least, is implementing our Capacity Building Program for four emerging BIPOC-led organizations. One of the things we've realized within our Neighborhood Prosperity Network model is all of those organizations, for the most part, some ten years ago, would have, we would probably have considered small and emerging organizations. And the landscape of the city, as it's changed rapidly and the demographics have shifted, people have moved to different places, has also warranted the need to grow new organizations in those new places to serve communities that perhaps have been underserved or overlooked. And so for us as an agency, we receive the tremendous value in doing both and, continuing to support our longstanding partners who are grown, who are maturing, who are leading tremendous and necessary work, as well as supporting emerging pockets of organizations that have a different perspective view, as well as serving an audience that perhaps might be missed by existing partners. And so we're looking forward to doing that work as well in the city. Again, partnerships make up everything and so much of how we show up in the city. We couldn't, couldn't be who we are and do who we are without those organizations. That's, that's what we have for now. Transitioning back to Kimberly.
All right. Thank you, Tori and Lisa. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Brannum, I'm Sean Murray, Director of Human Resources. Healthy Agency represents the internal work that Prosper is engaged in. And the following slides highlights our progress internally. Ensuring that our agency reflects the communities that we serve is very important to us. And the left side of the slide reflects or represents the demographic changes that our agency has had over the past five years. This information is provided with the understanding that the retention rate within our agency is very high, especially within our management structure. So in two thousand fifteen, employees of color represented twenty one percent, while white employees represented seventy nine percent of our agency. This is in comparison to the demographic data of two thousand and twenty, in which employees of color now represent thirty nine percent, while white employees represent sixty nine percent of our agency. For our management structure, in two thousand fifteen, managers of color represented sixteen percent, while white managers represented seventy four percent within our agency. And this is in comparison to two thousand twenty, in which our managers of color now represent thirty one percent, while white managers represent sixty nine percent in our agency. And reviewing the right side of the slide, over the past five years, the agency's non-TIF resource, resources budget, operation, operating budget went from fifty five percent in two thousand fifteen down to thirty one percent in two thousand twenty. Also during this period of time, our vitalization, our virtualized server systems have increased by seventy percent. What this means is that rather than having each server on its own piece of hardware, systems are now running on a few bigger servers and on the cloud. And lastly, in line with hiring a diverse workforce and working with diverse communities, the EGC Department has conducted over twenty equity learning sessions for employees, which ranged from cultural change to nonviolent communication, hiring and managing a diverse workforce, to institutionalize racism, to name just a few of the learning sessions that have been conducted. Next, I'll turn it over to Myra and Adam.
Thank you, Sean. I, can you, can we go to the next slide, please? So I want to share some of the highlights of the main accomplishments we've achieved through Prosper, particularly centering the equity progress we've had or equity conversations. So I want to share some of the highlights of the main accomplishments we've achieved through Prosper, particularly centering the equity progress we've had or equity conversations. So there are some critical bodies of work that are both a result of our journey and our learning, and also that have better positioned us and shaped us to keep advancing equity work. So the framework, the first one is our equity framework that we launched almost two years ago as a way to create shared language, shared understanding, and shared tools and accountability for our organization. We also, but part of that work has to do with our community engagement guidelines that we released, I believe, a year ago or so. We also worked on advancing equitable outcomes through the Small Business Relief Funds. Then we focused a lot on translation and culturally responsive engagement. How do we improve the experience of people that are reaching out to our organization or to the city, trying to access funds for their businesses? And we worked on the ten year financial sustainability plan to which Adam will give an update in a second. Can we go to the next slide, please? And so moving forward and based on, based on all the learnings and experiences we've had together, the main priorities for the next eighteen months for, or on equity. Are primarily to establish a new strategic plan for our agency with significant and robust, robust community engagement. We want to keep focusing on learning, results based accountability, and to add, and to both learning and have it become a practice for our organization, but also. Start testing and implementing on key initiatives. We want to keep advancing our equity work and really look at it through a lens of intersectionality. But first, we want to start learning again on accessibility, gender, and LGBTQ equity issues that we can start incorporating into our everyday practice. We want to formalize language, language access efforts with policy, budget, and implementation. As, and so we can also update our website and key messaging channels, so it's more accessible. And we also want to identify priorities and make progress on culture change and response to the letters we received, both from staff and our Council for Economic and Racial Equity. So I will pass it on to Adam right now. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay.
To Sean Murray, Sean Murray, thank you.
Sorry about that. In terms of offering. Completing our cultural assessment has to do with involving the entire agency. In terms of assessing how our cultural changes are made, we're also looking at updating all of our job descriptions within the positions. Within Prosper Portland to ensure that all classifications are within line of our CBA as well as our job descriptions. And then we're going to ensure that pay equity is in accordance with the Oregon State laws. As it represents equity amongst pay within our classifications. And then we'll also be engaging in possible interim bargaining. That we recently had to go over in terms of adjusting for salary adjustments, as well as dealing with. Meeting the overall goals of our department budget, agency budget. Next, I'll turn it over to Adam.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as I think you've referred reference to, a big piece of work coming up over the next couple of months. Is going to be updating our Financial Sustainability Plan. That's going to be an agency wide effort that is really going to engage. Finance led, but a lot of people involved and really trying to identify new business models that will take us forward in a sustainable manner with impact to the community that we're looking for. The second item here is to finalize implement new approach to program income. The legal team has been researching the ability to have flexible spending as it relates to our earned income. And that should be finalized shortly. And it will involve changes to our general ledger and our accounting. But is a, if it plays out as we expected to, will give us some significantly enhanced flexibility with those funds. The next item is sort of a mostly internally focused effort. Key systems are getting upgraded and new, new systems getting implemented. This is primarily the biggest lift here is finalizing our new time tracking system and payroll system. That's almost done and will kick off at the beginning of the year. The next one is a finance led effort with very significant support from IT, which will be implementing the new version of our general ledger. Next item, our FIC to CAFE. FIC is of course financial, the Finance Investment Committee. CAFE is Committee for Accountability, Finance, and Equity. It is both a name change and a process change. The project team just kicked off there to really show that not only are we going to be sort of tuning up CAFE. Trying to improve our, our impact and our processes there, but there's a bigger effort around that that will keep you apprised on that has to do with lending. As well as acquisitions and dispositions. Completing the Equitable Contracting Roadmap, that's in an effort of our procurement team. And we also, as we're going to continue in this teleworking environment for some number of months, probably at least another six months. We're really looking at how we support staff working from home. And that includes a one hundred percent move to laptops and also figuring out how and when we, we move, move back to the office. And finally, on this list is trying to dispose of legacy properties, including Centennial Mills, Block A and N, one hundred Monuma. And acquiring new assets in support of FSB two point oh. The disposition of legacy properties is particularly important, just because we've seen property management costs, especially rent security, really go up over the last twelve months. And trying to really try to minimize those non-value added activities on, on properties that we don't have great plans for is going to be really important. Thank you very much. And now we're just looking at questions or for any of the presenters, please.
Oh, great. Thank you. Would any of the Commissioners like to start off with questions or comments? Everybody's kind of quiet. I think we're, I think we're getting kind of late in the day.
This is, this is Peter. I'm curious about the, learning a little bit more about the partnerships, particularly with respect to the Neighborhood Prosperity Programs. Going forward, because they seem to be this kind of the highest touch. Interfaces with our, our small business communities throughout the city. I'm not sure if that's, it's, that's an accurate read, but I'm, you know, as we head into an environment of reduced financial resources. I think obviously those partnerships are going to be critical going forward in terms of sharing the, sharing the load. So I just wanted to perhaps get a little bit more, a little more detail. Doesn't have to be now, but in future sessions or in future conversations, just to better understand how that's, how that's shaping up.
Anybody want to comment on that, on staff or?
Yeah, I'm happy to start, and then I think we can dig more, dig further into the topic at our January Budget Work Session. But, you know, the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative districts, the funding that they receive from us covers a district manager. As well as some operations funding, and then they have the ability to invest the tax increment revenue from their micro TIF districts. And so we, we had a commitment from City Council as we entered into this partnership. That for the ten year life of the district, that we would have the operating funds through the general fund, that we would have some revenue sharing. Basically related to the tax increment finance revenue and then those resources. Some of the, and Neighborhood Prosperity Network districts are within larger organizations like NEA. And so they have other funds that they leverage, and some of them are really largely supported through Prosper Portland's investment. And so I think as we work with each Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative District, that question of what does your future look like? And how can we continue to support you is probably going to be a different conversation for each district, depending on what their aspirations are and what their capacity to fundraise or just, you know, where, where they are. But we also recognize, as Tori was mentioning, that, you know, ten years went by pretty quickly. And the first five years was really a lot of startup and they're, you know, now hitting their strides. So I think we're also reluctant to completely walk away and would love to figure out how we can continue to be key supporters and partners in that. So it's a, it's a really important question.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the other Commissioners?
It's just a great snapshot of where we are in so many different arenas, so thank you for all your work on it. I think this current pandemic and post pandemic periods are going to really test our ability to remain nimble and, and adjust and adapt. So I just really appreciate all the creative energy that is so evident on the staff and, and all the good work that's been done so far.
Thank you. Well, I would just echo what Commissioner Gambetti just said. For my part, that some of the things I'm excited about are the Broadway Corridor development, of course. That, that's going to be something that will be exciting for our city and also be a symbol of success or failure. Probably for us as we go along over the next few years. So I'm excited, excited to see that all come together. I think the business support through the Inclusive Business Resource Network and the Cluster Action Plans are really important. As are the assistance to COVID impacted businesses just in the near future. We need to, of course, continue to emphasize that. And then things that I'm worried about or concerned about are just our continued access to resources as an agency. So I'm, I'm looking forward to looking at the Financial Sustainability Plan two point oh as we go forward. And, you know, I appreciate Adam and his team's work on that and look forward to engaging on that further. Couple of other things that I was interested in learning more about, not today, but just whenever. The Developers of Color Program, I think that's an exciting development and something that we've been hearing about for a long time. And be really interesting to see that come together, both for, you know, for development of the city, but also for wealth generation over time. And so those, I mean, those are just a few things. I'm also, I'd also like to hear more about that software program that we had for property management. I don't know where that's at now, but I didn't hear that mentioned in any of these presentations, and that was a big deal a year or two ago. And I don't know if we're fully up to speed on all that yet and it's working or not. And so at some point, it'd be nice to hear a little bit more about that. So anyway, those are, those are my thoughts. I don't know if any of the other Commissioners have any additional comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, Chair Cruz. I'm excited about the, obviously the neighborhoods and moving forward and seeing Broadway Corridor come into, into view. Also excited about the jobs piece and the work we're doing there and how it overlays and ties in with equitable wealth creation as well. I think there's some connections there that we, I'd like to dive more deeply into later. But thank you for the, the presentations. This was good work.
I'll just, I, I kind of dodged the, I forgot about the, the initial question you, you, you set us off on in this period was the. What we're excited and worried about, and I'll just hone in on the Williams and Russell, which I just think is such an incredible opportunity to. To do something really interesting there, an opportunity to right really a historic wrong and be creative and equitable in our, you know, our planning, our programming, and our implementation approach. But it's also probably one of the areas where I'm most concerned, just because I think there's so much. There's such a painful and personal history tied, tied to that site and to that neighborhood. And the history of urban renewal that, and a deep seated just distrust in really what was, I think mostly PDC's involvement in urban renewal. And I think just we still, you know, this was one of the first kind of pivotal projects or issues that came when I first joined the board a few years ago. And the, the very first hearing had, had some controversy, and I just feel like there's still a lot of work to do. And that the Project Working Group has been doing amazing, amazing difficult work. I'm just hopeful that there's more progress that can be made to build on our partnerships and help the community come together on this site and, and do something really, really great.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any further comments? I think these have just been great presentations, really helpful to the board. I know that you spent quite a bit of time and effort in synthesizing and kind of consolidating and, and getting all this information together. So really appreciate that. Really useful to the board, as Commissioner Gambetti said, to see a snapshot of all of these efforts at one time is very helpful. So thank you. All right. Well, we're down to the end of our agenda, so unless anybody has anything else to say. I will gavel us out. There being no further items on the agenda, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays and Happy New Year. And thank everyone for their tremendous work over this last year. It's been a super challenging year. That's an understatement, of course. But we're all still here and we're, we're going to have a great year next year. I'm excited about next year. So thanks to everybody for your, your great work and your continued optimism. And, and I just look forward to working with all of you in two thousand twenty one.
Thanks, Tavon.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.